I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 1st meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I'd ask that you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Bastido, absent, Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Veremis.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We'll move on to item two, public forum. Clerk Tamer, is anyone signed in to participate in public forum this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Dave Zerzowski, did I say it right?
All right. If you, for each of the participants, if you use the back microphone, sort of just to the side of the second row of chairs, you state your name. Address is optional. Sometimes that helps us get back to you. And you will have three minutes. And please proceed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Dave Zerkowski, Elmhurst resident for 20 years. Did you say address is optional?
Yes.
257 North Oak Lawn in Elmhurst. I just wanted to bring something to everyone's attention. I was part of a group that was at the library on March 2nd, and we were having a, we had a Meeting Room B to have people sign a petition for some verbiage we wanted to get added to the ballot November 4th. And it just kind of unraveled a little bit at the library. We were told we couldn't be there to sign petitions, which I'm not sure is true or not. That's not the point I'm trying to make. What I'm getting at is that an article appeared in the Patch about a week later describing what had happened. And so after that, I was like, geez, that's kind of, it kind of got more coverage than I would have thought anything would get. And after that, there were Freedom of Information requests about emails exchanged between the Mary Beth Harper at the library and Marcia Baker, who I believe is the board president of the library. And what ends up happening is a day before this Meeting Room appointment we had, there are emails being, going back and forth, making it look like this was, I don't know, the way I'm reading it is that, hey, we need to stop this from happening potentially. It's that one of the emails from Marcia Baker says, hey, just a heads up, the person who was trying to rent this room is a member of Epic and a new parents' rights group that's scheduled for tomorrow at 11:00 to 2:00. I don't know what the bearing that this would be, an Epic person, or what organization they belong to shouldn't have any bearing on being able to use the room. But then later, the next day, I guess this was in the morning, it says, hey, just FYI, the information about this petition signing was reposted on Facebook. I have assured folks that the library staff knows this. I don't know who would be, who had to know about this, who above the library board president would need to know about this, what folks had to be assured that something was going to be handled in a certain way. This seems suspicious to me, I think potentially on maybe the topic that, of this petition, which was really a yes or no question for parents' rights to be added to the ballot November. It was not a left-right issue, it was a parents' issue. So I want to know, I want everybody to be aware that there seems to be more to this than what was just, met the eye the day we were there and were asked to leave and go sign outside, which was fine, we were able to do that. But I'm suspicious that we were also negated from having an event at a private establishment on Spring Road that ended up being moved to the library. I went to that, to that location first and was unaware that it didn't have canceled. And I asked the owner why it was no longer being held there. And he was slightly, very nice, but slightly evasive, and just said, we aren't going to have those kind of events here. And I don't know what, how he would have known what it was, or what spooked him about it. But the combination of these coincidences seems to me like that there was not a level playing field for someone to go use the library for something that basically got 85 to 90% acceptance of the people we talked to that day and subsequent days about signing this petition. They're very much engaged and seemed to be, have a positive response to what we were doing. I wanted to be known that there should be some questions asked as to the procedures at the library. And in this specific instance, why was the, why was this seemingly targeted a day or two in advance? And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tom Chavez.
Mr. Chavez.
My name's Tom Chavez. I live at 523 Mitchell, Elmhurst. And I just want to follow up on what Dave was talking about, because I'm part of the group that originally organized this signing event, this petition signing event at a private business. And that business was called by the same people that tried to chase us out of the library and basically bully them into calling me on my way home from a business trip and telling me that we were, not that we were unwelcome, but they were afraid of the consequences of having us sign our petition. And we had done it previously, sat at the table, didn't disrupt anybody. And, but this time, the same people that called the library, or, you know, had called the restaurant or the place on Spring Road, and basically bullied them into chasing us out of there. All we were doing is having people come in, have a beer, learn about our petition. And in Elmhurst, there's a lot of people that are very passionate about whatever they believe in. We happen to be very passionate about parents' rights. And so we're going around and explaining to people what this, what we want to do for the November ballot, get this initiative, working with this Parents Matter group to get this petition signed. So I just wanted to, I sent an email to Mayor Levin, got a response back. I have to tell you, it was unsatisfactory because it wasn't really, there wasn't much in it. There wasn't much meat on the bone. But the American Library Association, this is from the ALA, "American Library Association affirms that all libraries are forums for information and ideas, and that the following basic policies should guide their services." There's 10 bullet points, but I'll skip down to the ones that apply here. "Libraries should challenge censorship in the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment." Fail. "Libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups concerned with resisting abridgement of free expression and free access to ideas." Fail. "A person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views." Fail again. "Libraries which make exhibit spaces and meeting rooms available to the public they serve should make such facilities available on an equitable basis, regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting their use." Fail again. So what I'd like you to do, Scott, is to do some research on this and find out who was involved. I know We Don't Ardeni sent emails back and forth. He's an alderman, you know, was happy that we were being chased out of there. But, you know, Elmhurst, if it's going to be for everyone, it should be for everyone with different viewpoints. You know, we're very, we like, we're very passionate about parents' rights. And there's a lot of things that are going on in our community that are challenging that. So we're, you know, we feel like we're standing up for it. We weren't, there was no disruption. You know, we know that, that other groups have had political events in the library, in the same room. So what we'd like you to do is do a little bit more thorough investigation, because we are, and find out what happened with the situation. Let us know. Thanks.
That's all that's signed up.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to participate in public forum but did not have an opportunity to sign in in advance of the meeting? If you would step to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Hi. Hi, my name's Carolyn Corillo. Thanks for hearing my thoughts on this matter. Having heard the two previous residents speak, I am also a resident of Elmhurst, have been for many years. I use the library a lot, and I also have done similar related events. So I was not part of this particular event, or this situation, whatever you want to call it. But I've done things where I've had petitions signed near libraries, and I have discovered that the policy tends to be the same. So to clarify, from what I gather in this particular case, they, this group had reserved the room and invited a more private group of people. It's not like they put posters out on North and 83 or anything and said, hey, come to the library and sign this. They invited a specific group of people. They did say certainly to share, I'm sure would have been part of it, but they weren't just announcing it like on the radio or anything. And it was, they weren't approaching patrons, which I believe is the intention behind the library policy. And why I wanted to speak is because I've been at other libraries and had other petitions signed, and I was advised of a very similar policy, and I think that's kind of what Tom was getting at, was that the policy is relatively the same across the board for libraries. So, and I'm aware, having myself participated in events of a political nature within a reserved room at the library, that's, that comes under policy, library policy. So I think, kind of, to try and clarify some of the things that have transpired, for maybe not everyone here knows, that this situation was not handled according to what other libraries would have done, what library policy seems to be. And then to clarify for those who aren't aware, from what I understand, at the next library board meeting, they actually changed the policy directly related to this. And I, in my way of thinking, I think it actually is more of an affront to our library patrons. So they've now changed the policy that if you are doing anything similar to a petition signing, you're not allowed to do it at all on library, within the library building. You need to be 25 feet away from an entrance. So I'd like all of you to take that situation and put it at our next election cycle and say, what will that be like for our library patrons? Because our policy at the Elmhurst Public Library, to my understanding, now says that you have to be 25 feet away from the entrance, and then you can approach library patrons. So does that mean that all of our candidates can, will, you know, can be in a line and harass every single patron as they walk in the door? I think that's not really what we're trying for. So the policy, the way that it stood before, I think did make sense. I'm not sure why this whole situation came up. And I agree, digging deeper and finding out what's going on would be within the purview of particularly, I believe this position is appointed by Mayor Levin. So, or whoever was mayor when the library board president was appointed. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We will conclude public forum. As you know, it's our policy not to address directly and engage in debate. But I want the members of the public to know that I did look into it and spend about three hours interviewing people, and I wrote two extensive emails. So when there is a valid concern, it's not ignored. We'll go on to receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a written communication that he or she would like to deliver? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all the hard work of staff and the police chief and mayor in facilitating a new business in Second Ward. I think inhale Elmhurst will be a wonderful dispensary and open a new chapter for legalized cannabis in Elmhurst. And I'm really happy to be the one to announce this, you know, to the public and make sure everybody understands that this is a really important, I'm sorry, I just can't go on, I can't go on.
Alderman Hill.
All right. Sorry, I heard today was something, perhaps April 1st. I actually do have an announcement, but it's not related. Cannabis is still no dispensary in Elmhurst. Sorry, I need a little bit of levity. I would like to just send out a reminder that there is still the BlueJ5K coming up on April 27th. And I encourage all of Elmhurst to sign up, not only to run, but to volunteer and donate. So that is available, linked up on runsignup.com. Runsignup.com. Thank you.
You've lost all credibility. I don't believe there is a race, but whatever you say, Alderman Hill. Any other announcements? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, would you please read the consent agenda?
5.1 Executive Session Meeting Minutes of the Elmhurst City Council, March 4, 2024. 5.2 Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on March 18, 2024. 5.3 Accounts Payable, April 1, 2024. $1,491,533.26. 5.4 Report, 2024 Sanitary Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation. 5.5 Report, 1 Toyota RAV4 LE Hybrid. PG37. 5.6 Report, 1 Chevrolet Blazer EV PD49. 5.7 Report, 1 Toyota RAV4 LE Hybrid E7. 5.8 Report, York Street Butterfield Road Intersection Improvements, Phase 2 Engineering. 5.9 Report, Street Light Controller Upgrades. 5.10 Report, 2024 Water Main Improvement Project Construction Phase Services. 5.11 Report, 1 Ford Edge SE Demonstrator PD48. See Item 7.1. 5.12 Request for Extension, Case 23, PO8 Edward, Elmhurst Preliminary. PUD for Medical Office Building. 5.13 An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Elmhurst to Wave Bidding and Purchase 1 2024 Toyota RAV4 Hybrid LE, Authorizing the Disposal and Trade-In of 1 2013 Ford Escape 4x4 for the City's Electrical and Building Maintenance Divisions. 5.14 An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Elmhurst to Wave Bidding and Purchase 1 2024 Toyota Camry LE Hybrid, and Authorizing the Disposal and Trade-In of 1 2014 Toyota Camry for the City's Police Department's Investigations Division. 5.15 An Ordinance Authorizing the City of Elmhurst to Wave Bidding and Purchase 1 2024 Toyota Camry LE Hybrid, and Authorizing the Disposal and Trade-In of 1 2008 Pontiac Grand Prix for the City's Police Department's Investigations Division. 5.16 A Resolution of the City of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois, Declaring a Surplus in the North York Street Tax Increment Financing District. 5.17 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Engineering Services Agreement with Kenning, Lindgren, O'Hara, and Abuna, Abuna, Inc., for the Traffic Study for Neighborhood Areas Number 4 and Number 5 in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 5.18 A Resolution Approving the 2024 Community Grant Recommendations and Awarding the Community Grants. 5.19 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Phase 1 Design Engineering Services Agreement, Buying Between BLA, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst for the Palmer Drive Local Agency Functional Overlay Roadway Improvement Project. And 5.20 A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Engineering Services Agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Baxter and Woodman, Inc., for the 2024 Wastewater Flow Monitoring Assistance Project.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either for the purposes of voting against or for further discussion? Alderman Toledo.
5.6.
5.6. Anything else? I may have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5.6. Alderman Jensen, second Alderman Bram. Clerk Tamer?
Bastido, absent. Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda minus item 5.6 passes. May I have a motion. Clerk Tamer, read the report on 5.6, please.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works and Buildings Committee that the city council approve the purchase of 1 2024 Chevrolet Blazer EV from Curry Motors of Frankfurt to replace PD49, and that the city attorney prepare the appropriate resolution authorizing the purchase. Signed, Alderman Emily Bastido, Chair. Alderman Brian P. Cahill, Vice Chair. Absent, Alderman Karen Shenko.
We have a motion to put 5.6 before the council. Alderman Cahill with the motion, Alderman Bram with the second.
Oh, Bram wasn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That should read that Alderman Bram signed the report as well. Sorry, Mayor.
All right. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Alderman Cahill.
I yield to Alderman Toledo.
Alderman Toledo.
Thank you. I support this report. I just wanted to make a couple comments for the public's information, and express a couple of concerns of mine. First off, thanks to the committee and Chief Ru, Chief, excuse me, Chief McLean and all of his staff that helped put this through the committee process. I think it's a good opportunity, and I agree with the committee's thought process and the police department's thought process on utilizing this particular operational police vehicle to assess whether or not these are viable for a public safety function like the police department. And that's where my, one of my primary concerns is, is are fully electric vehicles appropriate for public safety uses? Specifically, I have experience, personal experience with all electric vehicles. Time for repair is a concern. And also, I would think for police vehicles in particular, charging in the field is also a concern. So it will be interesting to see how this pans out. And I hope that it is a minimal risk, and I think it will be a minimal risk to public safety, because I have full faith that if the police department feels it becomes a risk to public safety, that they will cancel the experiment. In addition, I did want the public to be aware that the purchase of this electric vehicle is $13,000 above what we budgeted for, and it's $18,000 above what a gas-powered vehicle of a similar spec would be for this purpose. So we are spending 20, 25% and 44% respectively above what the cost for a gas-powered vehicle. Now, I understand that that doesn't account for the gas that's used by the gas vehicle. I didn't do that math. I know that they did. In addition, we are spending $36,000 per new charger installed on city property, four of which are going to be installed this year. So it's going to be $36,000 to install the charger at the police department, plus then the increased cost to purchase an electric vehicle. So we are spending additional dollars to test this concept. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other discussion? Mayor. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I just have a question on the installation costs and the source for that information.
Sure. So that was verified by the Director of Public Works and the police chief tonight. That's the cost to not only purchase the charging equipment, but to install the new electric service that's required at all of those units to upgrade the power and the infrastructure that is in those locations for each. So it's $145,000 budgeted for EV installers, as I was told today.
Okay. Thank you. May I, please? So I agree with Alderman Toledo with respect to, we're going to learn a lot with this vehicle. Being a owner of an EV vehicle, you know, my, my maintenance cost has gone down dramatically. So I know this is, the way I drive, you know, is different use case than a police vehicle. That said, I do see a lot of maintenance costs on our public vehicles in general. So I think it'll be very interesting to see what that maintenance cost is associated with a vehicle like this on an annual basis. I also support the report, as I think we will learn a lot. I agree with the alderman. Is the, you know, battery life, you know, if we, if we use it for this particular use and extrapolate that to a regular day in the life of, you know, the regular police vehicle, will there be enough, you know, charge in the vehicle to get them through a shift? If not, you know, what is the downtime associated with, with charging? So there's a lot of good lessons that will come from this. I support the purchase of this, even though it is more expensive longer term. Who knows? Maybe there's some, some hidden benefits beyond just better for the environment, but from a cost for ownership perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo both Alderman Toledo and Alderman Brennan on the electric experiment, and we will learn a lot. Me personally, as I've owned a car, electric car, for eight years, or nine years now, and we have three of them in our family, the repair and maintenance, our anecdotal exact experiment has been almost zero, just tires and some wiper blades. This particular vehicle that we're discussing tonight, it was highly vetted by the Michigan State Police for over a year, and not just one, but a fleet of them. And they ran them like crazy in Michigan. It gets much colder in Michigan. So the cold weather fear should be, as again, we'll find out in the experiment, I think we'll have it covered, but I'm going to be watching carefully, as I think we all like to find out how this works. Speaking to the charger at $36,000 each, or whatever that budget number is and what that covers, let's keep in mind that we almost spent a million on the refueling station at Public Works. There's a lot of $36,000s and a million dollars. So just to put a comparative on that, so I'm excited about the vehicle, and I'm looking forward to the results. And I, of course, support the vehicle and bringing it in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Erby. Additional discussion? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. This may be not totally germane to this issue, but I think it is a little bit. I'm not so concerned necessarily this is an EV, or, you know, I don't know if hybrids are investigated. I assume that staff looked at all the options. And the concern I have more is with the replacement cycle on the fleet lately. I've noticed this with other vehicles. And to be fair, again, I have not talked to Public Works staff about this, but I've noticed a lot of what I consider fairly recent vehicles. And I understand there's idling time, especially with the police department that's factored in, or rough use that may be seen on other fleet replacements. But I think these replacement cycles seem a little short in the recent replacements we've seen. And I am hoping that we'll find more ways to eke out more life out of these cars, basically. I am sure that a 2019 probably does get a lot of use. It doesn't seem like a lot of mileage, but it's been run a lot, I'm sure, idling. But again, I'd be curious to hear what the rationale is for replacing a car after five years. That's my only comment on it.
Okay. Other discussion? Clerk Tamer?
Bastido, absent. Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Item 5.6 passes. On to reports and recommendations of the elected officials. Mayor Levin, I just have two announcements. Pleased to report that I administered the oath of office to Officer Jake Lickety this morning, a lateral transfer who started out here as a Elmhurst Police Explorer and moved to Florida and is a police officer there and in Palatine, and brought about 22 of his close family in, who are almost all Elmhurst residents, so we welcome him. Also, this Friday, April 5th, at 10:00 a.m. at Fire Station Number 2, we'll be doing the groundbreaking for the First Responders Memorial Plaza. It's Friday at 10:00 a.m. And I hope you can all join
Three quick items. We posted a couple of things on the website. One is that with the construction at the 294 and North Avenue area, the frontage road underneath 290 is closed, and there's detours in that neighborhood. We've worked with IDOT to rework them. We weren't real happy with the first version that they came out because it sent a lot of traffic into the neighborhood, so we've worked with them to do that. Information is on the website, so I'd recommend you avoid that area if possible. Second is that the Public Works Citizens Academy will begin April 11 and run through May 9, so please encourage people to sign up for that. And finally, our spring cleanup is here. It will, God bless you, it will be April 13, 20, and 27. Those are all Saturdays. The April 13 date is for Wednesday pickup, the April 20 date is for Thursday pickup, and the April 27 date is for Friday pickup.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports from the dais?
Bless you.
All right. Moving on to item 7, ordinance 7.1. Is something going around here? Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase one 2024 Ford Edge SE All-Wheel Drive Demonstrator and authorizing the disposal and trade-in of one 2016 Ford Edge for the city's police department's investigations division. See item 5.11.
All right. We have a motion to put 7.1 before the council. Alderman Cahill with the motion, Alderman Bram with the second. Alderman Cahill.
The reason we are waiving bidding is for the fact that its timing is of essence to purchase this vehicle, although it is in the realm of the city manager's spend limit, we want to be very transparent to the city council, and therefore, we're bringing it to the council.
Thank you. Other discussion? Clerk Tamer.
Bastido absent, Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Vremus.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. An ordinance 7.1 is adopted. Item 8, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion or ocean to adjourn? Alderman with the motion, Alderman Hill with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.